At this time, I'd like to call to order the Modern County Planning and Zoning Commission. We've got some background.
We've turned off our background.
Okay. All right, we're, it's December 2nd, 2021. We're in, at the first floor conference room, 1500 Highway 2, Sandpoint, Idaho. Would everybody please scan?
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I have a roll call with commissioners from my left, please.
Commissioner Barza.
Commissioner Frankenbach.
Commissioner Reed.
And Commissioner Bailey as chair. Are there any changes in the agenda? None, any announcements? And then, everybody have a chance to look at the minutes. No objections? Okay, so we're good to go there. And so, we'll get started here, but we don't have a full crowd tonight, so I don't have to scold anybody about their conduct in the room. So, everybody needs to be courteous to each other, please. We're live, and we have to watch our language. So, being it's 5:32 roughly, our first file is file ZC0031-21. Zone change, Clayton Revocable Trust is requesting a zone change from Rule 10 to Rule 5. Forty acre parcel is located off Langley, Langley, or Langleys?
Langley.
Langley. Depends upon which side of my glasses I'm reading on. Canyon Road in Section 13, township 56 North, range 6 West, Boise Meridian. Are there any conflicts of interest? Go ahead, sir.
Commissioner, do you want to go over the procedures, or shall I?
Well, everybody understanding procedures tonight? Okay. I think we're good to go. Thank you, Commissioner.
Dan Brohl, planning staff for the record. We're here tonight to discuss a zone change from Rule 10 to Rule 5. To the evaluation of the amendments, so Modern County Device Code 12-111 says that the zoning code has already been revised against the comp plan and is already consistent with the comp plan. Modern County Device Code 1230.1 gives staff an opportunity to review the application towards the zoning code. And 1216 allows the governing body and staff to review those particular facts to see if they're consistent with the zoning code, which has been determined to be with the comp plan. So, project summary, Napkan is requesting a zone change from Rule 10 to Rule 5 to allow landlord to match the zoning to the east and to the south. Proposed zone change will remain within the current comp plan designation of rural residential for five to 10 acres. The rural district has two designations, R10 and R5, which this request was reviewed against. So, a little background on the site, there's been a slight change in the acreage from the staff report and the application to tonight's presentation. Turns out it's 30 acres we're discussing this evening and not 40. It is currently vacant and it is unplanted. It is, land use designation is rural residential. The property is located off Langley Canyon Road, which is a gravel county maintained road, and it'll have a gravel easement accessing the property coming from the north into those, into that parcel, that section. So, there, on this map, in the orange and in the yellow are indicator of slopes. This would be wetland in these colors here, and this is the Pondray River. As you can see, this property doesn't contain any maps, slopes, or wetlands. And it does not have any waterfront or streams on it. Services will be provided on the property will be in individual well, individual set systems. It will be within the West Funteray Fire District. Power can be provided by Northern Lights and is within Forest School District 83. So, we find two types of soils on the property. In the orange, as you see there, is prime farmland if it's irrigated. And the inside the purple, and it's questionable whether that's on there because that's just kind of rough sketch, but in fact, those are the 30 acres we're talking about. In the purple, it's not prime farm land at all. So, this is the current zoning in the dark blue. There is the Rule 10, and all this light blue out here is all Rule 5 designation. These were the 15 agencies that were asked to comment on this file. The only agency that replied was the Idaho Department of Land, and they had no comment. One comment was received from the public with concerns to increase in density that, and will affect the groundwater and the wetlands, and is also opposed to the zone change. Comprehensive plan designation is rural residential, which provides for areas of residential development where urban services are not available and slopes may vary up to 30%. These areas include hazardous, sorry, these areas include hazardous areas, critical wildlife habitat, where lower density reduces potential impacts to resources and exposure to loss of property or lives. Small scale ag use and residential developments noted. So, these are the standards for review for the R10. So, we look at the property and make a determination. If the property is characterized by slopes steeper than 30%, this 30 acres is not. There is not a critical wildlife habitat on the property. It does not contain prime ax soils. It is served by public and private roads. It is not within a floodway. It does not have limited public services. It is, however, developed at or near one acre or five acre density. Findings and facts have not changed since staff report, nor have the conclusions of law. Proposal is, the proposed zone change is consistent with Modern County Device Code. That concludes my presentation. Any questions? Any questions to staff?
Yes, I have a question, Commissioner Reed. That 40 acre piece really does not provide, I mean, can we read? The access to that 40 acre piece would be over private property.
Right, then, I believe Napkan owns all that property there, and then from north to south here, I believe they propose an easement here so to have direct access. Well, it'd be a private road going through, I don't know if it'd be dedicated as a road or an easement in the future. But Napkan's representative shouldn't speak to that.
Is that within the ACI?
No.
What's the nearest city?
I guess Old Town would be.
And how far away is that, please?
I have no idea.
Let's throw it up on the big map.
It's right there. Colored in area, oh, that's two miles away, I suppose. Way less than that. Well, as the crow flies, yes. So.
It's kind of weird, those ACIs down there, weird. Yeah.
Okay, well, it helps more of a comment than, or an observation than a question, but if you look at the comp plan, it says rural residential is where slopes vary up to 30%. And then, if you look at the zoning, rural 10 is where slopes are above 30%. So, those obviously can never occur if we have improper land use designation. So, it's just an observation. It's something I noticed a few months ago when I was going through all of the different land use designations and the zoning criteria. We don't have what, in the area of sets, they would call, we don't have orthogonal definitions of sets. We have gaps between land use and zone designations, and we have overlaps, both. It's part of what makes it so difficult to evaluate these things. So, just an observation. I don't think it really is germane here, since there are no slopes, but.
So, the area of CD impact goes just below this property, so it doesn't reach this property.
So, that's what 12-111 discusses in the code, that when they wrote it in 2008, it's compared against the comp plan.
So, I'm suggesting that there's a problem with that code, because in fact, if you take it literally, rural 10 cannot exist anywhere. Because in order for an area to be, have a rural residential land use designation, slopes must be less than 30%. And then, when you look at what's Rule 5 and what's Rule 10 within that land use designation, it says rural 10 is slopes over 30%. It's a problem.
No, it's not. We declared that it's in, we declared it's in accord with the comp plan. In 2008, they made that statement. The conflict is in accordance with Idaho. Right, and I'm here to debate that, I just, 12-111, they said 2008.
This is the first time one of these has come up since I had this awareness a few months ago, so I thought I would make a comment.
Yeah, that's really good.
Save it for the comp plan update.
What you're saying, it's 215, Section B 3. We'll get to that delivery.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I, we'll, we're gonna discuss that and deliver, actually, a little bit over there. Any other questions to staff?
Commissioner Reed, yeah, did you have a chance to walk the property, to go out and take a look at it?
I have not been on this particular parcel, no, but I'm quite familiar with that area. Been by that property and other properties near it for eight years.
In relationship to the wetland down below and the housing around it. That's what I was wondering. If you had a chance to look at the wetlands close to this and the housing around it and the other properties?
Couple thousand times.
It was just very odd, like, right in the middle of all the acreage. It's owned to take that 40 out when it doesn't comply on the Kennedy Road lane and the other properties that are, that are zoned, are by, do have other roads accessing. That was one question.
I think it's a great question, probably more appropriate for the Napkan, for the Napkan's rep. I have an answer for that, if you can imagine.
Okay. Any other questions, staff? Thank you. The Napkan's representative?
Dan Brohl, project representative, project surveyor. I would like to go ahead and hand in some exhibits that might clear up a little bit of what's going around up there, the area and the vicinity. So, we have some vicinity, we've got some overlays of the photography, we have some densities on the nearby home sites, properties. And we also have the wetland map and the location of the city of the home, so. Let's be fast and down, I'll explain it as we go, just at least get it started here.
I have to stand back to report?
Yeah. So, all these red dots are home property parcel sizes from two acres up to six. And we have that on here. So, there's considerable amount within the vicinity, especially in the southeast sector. These are existing subdivisions, and I also have all of that.
And then, the streets and that property, and then that larger individual property on the other side, too.
Yes, the subject property is owned by the same, okay. It's everywhere between here. We can use regular map and show exactly where the boundaries is of the landowner also. So, more of the vicinity that's encompassed is, it shows you Old Town, suburban zone, Washington, Idaho. So, we've got the Langley County Road coming in up through the gully here, and it crosses over into Newman Lake Road, which is on a loop side down. That's down to the highway.
Freeman Lake, correct, yeah, very familiar, I lived in the area.
Okay.
I took on a lot of this, it's crazy.
So, this one shows the subdivisions nearby. And you can see the red dots are between, two, just off the chart, on up to some six acre pieces. And that's, and then, this is a large subdivision, which means you can as well, a lot of the systems, a lot of them all there. There's not a trenching on an area, that's all where you have that.
And they have common water.
And, you know.
And there's, there's your closing wetlands, they're down.
Commissioner, it's really hard to create a record when everybody's talking. So, we need to know, you know, who's talking, because it's all being recorded, so.
All the way down here, since, since this is the long.
Also, please take note of the contour. That's where the slopes are.
Yeah.
And so, the wetland. The wetland is quite a distance from our project site.
So, that was the Napkan's representative that was explaining the exhibits to the county commissioners. You have any more?
We have a couple more. This is actually a, an attachment of the zone change area itself, and this shows where our project is, and this shows the rest of the landowner's property also. I would like to explain how we can get from point A to point B concerning the road access into the parcel. Langley, and Jill, road comes up, it does continue over into the Freeman Lake Road.
Freeman Lake, yeah.
So, we can come in at this point, there's, on the owner's property, and provide access into the zone change area.
Does a current driveway come off up here, Dan, or off in this area?
Currently, down below is where the residential areas are, the home sites, so forth, down on the third road.
Commissioner Reed is in conversation with the Napkan.
If I could make a suggestion, Dan, Commissioner Glasso, if you have those, you can bring them up. Then, when we have questions, it's not a quiet sidebar. It might be easier for recording.
Any more exhibit, and these are the well reports in four square miles of the site. So, I'd just like to emphasize on some of the some of the things that staff had laid out. Again, we're taking 30 acres, which is our 10, and we're requesting a zone change to our 5, which effectively only increases the density three additional parcels. So, it's not something large like a couple of weeks ago. It does not meet only one criteria for the R10. So, I guess what that's saying is, if you go through, go through what is in the comp plan for what is, what constitutes R10, run through those real quick, characterized by slopes steeper than 30%, that's a no. Located within critical wildlife habitat, as identified federal, state, and local agencies, no. Contains prime ax soils, no. Served by network of public and private roadways, there'll be a private roadway coming off the public road, so that would be a yes. Within a floodway, no. Contains limited access to public services, no, they're well within the school system and fire department, and of course, health department. So, one, two, three, four, five. So, out of six elements of the R10, we only meet one, and that's the road system. R5?
Actually, we do, it does meet.
Yeah, that's the only yes. I go yes on the road system. Did you say it wouldn't because it actually doesn't touch? I mean, that would be the.
No, no, I'm saying that the way that this reads, do not meet applicable roadway standards or, or private roads, are absent, right? Or are absent, whatever.
Okay. And the R5, so it doesn't, it doesn't really meet the rural 10 designation or criteria. R5, areas designate rural residential in the comp plan that already are developed at or near ones only for five acre density, which it does, and it demonstrated on the exhibits of the surrounding easterly and southeasterly and southerly parcels. And it also meets the criteria by not meeting the criteria for R10. So, in two ways, it's an and/or for the R5, of course.
So, Chair, if I could clarify the roadway question. So, depending on the road you're going to build, correct? This is directors talking, you identify yourself. Yep, well, from the record, yep. If you're if you're gonna build a road that meets the private road standards, which is a 20 foot road inside a 30 foot easement with a foot of shoulders on each side, then it would meet the private road standards. Okay, and that would exclude it from this requirement, right? So, that's what we're trying to clarify, is, is there a private road that, does it meet these road standards? That's what we're trying to clarify. Thank you.
Okay. So, as in any portion of the development phase, if there's going to be development to actually take place within this zone district, then there, it would go through the other standards of the development phase, site planning, subdivisions, minor land divisions, anything at that point, then that's when we are required to have access, bill to code, to get to these proposed, or this proposed site upon development, and that's when the health department looks at it. We provided well reports that show that there is plenty of water in that area. It gets lenient off to the east and off to the north a little bit, but right in that area, especially in the south, there are some very good wells. So, if there's any questions, I can answer.
Any more questions, staff?
Commissioner Reed.
I mean, I mean, Dan, it's good.
Commissioner Glasso, I do have a question. You said that, I wanted to point out, 12-2-15, a plan of the proposed site drawn to scale showing location, building, parking, and loading areas, traffic, access, and circulation, so that should have already been provided, so let's see if we can.
Okay.
That's in the application process.
This is correct. And on the on the site map that I sent down, that was the zone in the narrative, we talked about what is there. Okay, so what I'm reading in 12-2-1-5, it's required a plan of the proposed site. So, that would be the proposed zone change site, correct?
Continue.
So, that is a site plan of what's existing now there, not what's proposed. It doesn't say anything about site development, future development, it doesn't say anything other than it is a site plan of everything that's there, so we can evaluate it against the zone change itself. It's not what we may do in the future. You can't have a zone change and have the entire plan, everything laid out down to the gutters and all that stuff, especially if you're not gonna be doing that. There are no buildings on there, there's no wells, there's no roads, none of this, what they're asking for is there. There's no utilities, signs, there are nothing but what you see, it's flat, you can look at the aerial photo, and you can see that it's flat land, mostly log, it's got some second growth trees in there.
Dan, I'm just reading 12-2-15, it tells us that we can expect in the application process.
Well, I think it is a site plan of what's there, not what's going. I believe that's the way it is, I mean, I don't see how you can read it any other way. It doesn't say what's coming, what, what the development, it's saying about future development, future site layouts, future anything, it's what's there, a plan of the proposed site, which is a site plan. That's it, that's, that's what we've got there, that's the site plan, that's where it's located, all the information is there. I think there's a bit of an interpretation issue there, but I don't see how it can be any other way. I don't see how you can be expected to lay out a development from a zone change. A zone change is just changing the zone, it's not a development phase.
Guys, go speak up.
I said, I, I'm under the impression that when they are ready to develop, they have to bring back a development plan for approval. Yes?
There would be during development, say if the person was gonna put in some five acre pieces in the new There would be during development, say if the person was gonna put in some five acre pieces in the newly designated five acre zone, we would do that per all of the code that's part of the development phase. It's all there. This is just a zone change. This isn't development anything.
So a question for staff or for Milton, this, and under our current codes, would this be, it'd be six five acre lots, I guess? Would this be a subdivision? Or is it something that could be done through MLBs or one of these more?
No, it would, it still requires a short plan. If he, if they were to break it into six lots.
And what?
And the short plan is the same as a regular subdivision with the exception of the public hearing. That's the only thing that's different between a short plan and a regular plan, is the regular plan goes to public hearing.
So you guys would, at that time, you'd be looking at all of the relevant road standards and stuff?
That's correct. That's correct. And we've, we've analyzed this as well and looked back at many previous applications. And I mean, even the, even the ones in 2013, there were 500 acres rezones. There were the, a plan of the proposed site was just a drawing of the, the parcel that was to be rezoned. It wasn't a drawing of all of the proposed, what was gonna happen with it down the road. It was just a rezone. It was, it was a drawing of the, of the proposed area to be rezoned. If, if there was, if there was a subdivision going along with this, we, we would have that application and those things. If this was an industrial site rezoned, then, then this application with all this detail would make sense. An industrial or commercial rezone, you know, there's more detail would, would make sense. But yeah, staff, as staff reviewed this with the, with council last week, the, the plan of the proposed site is, the proposed site is what's being rezoned. Any other questions of the applicants?
Commissioner Reed, Dan, perhaps you can explain to me why that 40 acres was taken out of that whole larger piece of 130-some acres, isn't it? It was just very odd because the properties that we see that are in our 5 are up above on a hill. And then it slopes down to this property. When I looked at the map and saw where the 40 was taken out, it was just quite, I'm, I'm curious as to why that 40 and why that piece right there, everything around it is an R10, except the properties that are up above on that shelf.
I would love to turn that one over to the, the landowner. She has some ideas out there with her property, what she's looking at for future. I'd love to have her answer that question.
Okay. So see, come on up to the podium and name an address for the record, please.
My name is Robin Caton, and if you could please correct the record, I think it has an L in it written on it in my name. It's Robin Caton, C-A-Y-T-L-A-N. My residence is 1111 Elm Street in Sandpoint, Idaho. I have been a resident permanently here for about six years. I have been coming here, this area, for probably close to 20 years. I've owned property in Bonner County since 2005, I believe. And so with regards to this project, these six parcels, I'm gonna use my finger. These six parcels, this is all actually pretty level land right here. And this is all level on this whole shelf up here. It was heavily logged, and so there were stumps all over the property, just so you can get a visual. There is no water there now. This is like a draw. It's a dirt road that comes down to the bottom part of the property. We have no intention in our family of selling this property and having a developer put housing there. First of all, I want to make that clear. We would like to do this for our own family to put houses over time there. And I am very proud of what we're proposing. It's with the mindset that we do as little impact to the neighborhood as possible. And so with that, this was formerly all, the entire parcel was part of a larger parcel at one point, 640 acres at one point. And it was owned by Mr. Hammacher, who was a, he had cattle, who's a farmer. So this whole bottom portion here is, so far this year, it's been operated as a farm. It will continue, continue to be operated as a farm. I have to say, when we bought it, it had been dormant for about 20 years. So we have been keeping in contact with as many of our neighbors, which are right in the area of impact of anything we do. I talked to them today and they were very in support still of what we're doing. And again, I just want to reiterate, that's not going to be a subdivision up for sale where we sell bulk lots to a developer who's gonna put housing there. It's for our family to develop over time slowly as we choose to. If you have any questions?
Any more questions of the applicant? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
Mr. Chairman, if I can correct my answer.
Go ahead.
Mr. Breaker, there, there are, there were two applications, two MLBs applied for earlier this summer. That's how this got found, is the two MLBs were applied for next to each other, creating a total of eight lots, six five acre parcels and two 10 acre parcels. And, and that's how we discovered this didn't meet zoning, so now the application. So I can pull up those MLB flats if you want to look at them.
So, so then my question really was, going forward, how would that land division be accomplished? Would it be through an MLB process?
Those would complete. So they've been, they've been approved with the condition that zoning be corrected.
Okay. And, and then help me understand what level of review happens with respect to road design and so on and so forth in that process?
Yeah, they're just, they're just required to put, you know, to put in an easement to make sure that access is built.
Okay.
Say easement, the, the new easement, 40 foot?
Uh, no, we, we haven't updated that part of.
Okay, any other questions? So we'll close, we'll open it up to public comment. Anybody wish to speak? You have for the project?
We have one person on line to hand up.
Okay, go ahead. Hey Asia, if you'd like to, if you may comment, that's your time.
Yep, Asia Williams Blanchard, Idaho. On one of the slides from staff, it said that this was prime farmland if irrigated, but then the conclusion says that there's no prime soil on that property. And so I would like that to be clarified. And then partly, one of the concerns in this particular area is you're increasing the number of wells and septic systems, and I didn't really see a deep dive into how that impacts the water because just saying there are people out here with wells that run well, these are, this is a smaller piece of property that you're talking about, and it is significantly different from the landscape. That also should be considered, and it's reasonable to also understand their points of access to their, that breakdown of this particular property. That's my only comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll close the public comment and would staff like to? You put that?
Well, no, so, so finally, on the, on the road access, it is a 40-foot easement going to property. So, and three of the septic is the proposed MLBs. And then the water issues, you know, our code, if we're gonna, if we're gonna require people to do a, you know, a master plan community, we need to put that in the code, right? Where they come in with these types of analysis. It, it just really isn't in the requirements of our code to say, you know, you need to prove that every lot's gonna have water, you know, for the next 100 years. It's not there. It's not, it's not in state statute. It's not in, in our code, so. I just, for as far as water, if we don't, if we don't get a report back from the state agency saying that there's concerns in this area for water, then we, we, you know, we don't have any onsite experts in the water. So we just have what agencies provide it, so. Well, that's a good answer there, Lynn. That's what we have to work with.
That's what you have to work with. And they're, they're short on water, then they have to have storage. That's how you be.
Right.
So that's just part of developers' problem when they move out. Dan, did you want to say anything more in the bottom at all, or you're done?
Dan Provol, so she did bring up the road thing. I think we kind of beat that one up. And so we're, we're showing that the road will come in and will, whatever required standards are at the time of development, that we take care of that, of course. You know, being a family situation here, they're not, are not gonna want two ruts in the, in the dirt going back in there. So it was, like she said, it was logged, heavily logged, and they had the stumps, and they've cleaned it up considerably, or in the process of cleaning things up up there. And so it is at the top of the slope, and it runs fairly flat off to the east. I did look at all of the well reports, and so there are groups of, and areas of water that are plentiful. And then the further east you get, off to the east, you get past the, about where the road is, where the road runs down, kind of cuts it in half. You get to the other side of that, and there were some pretty tough wells that were fairly deep and, and limited water supplies. You run just to the south and off to the west, plenty of water in there. There were a lot of wells. You can see them stack. Further to the north, on the other side of the canyon road there, up on the other side, that was barely dry up in there also. But where we're at, I feel confident that we have that. Plus, down below, in the section itself, down below, there are some really good wells down in there, 20 gallons a minute. So all on the landowner's property. So there's water. For families, they're gonna make it work. If there's not water on top, there's water on the bottom, so they can put in some system.
Well, and a big tank, and absolutely. Serve their houses.
Absolutely.
Do you have something to add, sir?
I do not.
So we'll close that, and we'll, oh. We close public comment. I'm sorry, Mr. Lynn Scott.
You can have my minutes.
Only closed. Okay, so we're moving on to Commissioner's deliberation, sir.
Commissioner Glasso, I'm a little concerned. I look at the application. You all bring up the application. I only look through the objectives and comprehensive plan. The landlord just told us that they're not gonna develop it. They might put a couple family homes on it, and I'm looking at the ins where's the application, which don't match that. Population, as a population grows, more land parcels are needed. Economic development. Our proposal will bring needed workers and property taxes to the county. It makes me uncomfortable. I'm hearing one thing and reading another thing that's submitted and writing.
That's why the motion reads, Commissioner Davis, the motion, when we get to the motion, it reads, and testimony received at this hearing. Doesn't say that it can undo or override what's written, but yeah. Well, it is, there's a lot of discussion that this commission needs to have about the process. And we've talked in very broad terms about some of those issues tonight. It's interesting. This is another interesting case. It, it's one where, if you look at the land form in relation to the zoning code descriptions of five or 10, yes, it does appear to fit the five rather than 10, but also quite a bit of that dark blue area up there adjacent to it, same, or the previous owner, which is up on that bench, probably could have been or should have been designated R5 when the zoning was put in place. But again, as we've said many times, zoning is simply follow section lines or property lines and take individual account of parcels to see whether it fits. So in that sense, is that, that notion is used as the, the answer to the necessity requirement, also in, in 12-4-11, that it was a mistake in the zoning map and potentially even the comprehensive plan. And that'd be the, that'd be the gist of it. Yeah, from the, from the criteria that's listed in we are, this is a zone change, not a comp plan amendment. So that does stand on the fact that the zoning code says it is compliant with the comprehensive plan. Such as it is, whatever, you know, just take that as a statement. It's a statement. Of course it says that. Why wouldn't it? No, this is not compliant with the comprehensive plan. Come on. It's gotta say that. So, but yeah, and we don't need to get into that tonight here during this file. But.
It's one of many things that we have.
Yeah, there's just so many. I mean, this, this case exemplifies a lot of those concerns that we have, that need to be discussed beyond an active file in looking at complent amendments and subsequent zone change, zone. But it's just a reminder, some information to stack on of that discussion later on.
And noted here, Commissioner Reed, to the south is our 5, what's not, it's surrounded northeastern, uh, northwest and south by rural 10.
Yeah, yeah, but true. However, Commissioner Davis again, if, if the process back in 2008 had gone property by property and looked at the descriptions, very likely this area up on the top of that block may have been designated as our plan. Just by, by description, it seems logical. So therefore, that, that's the rationale for, part of the rationale to say that it should be our plan.
Because Diamond Heights was developed years ago in the seventies?
Yeah.
Or?
Oh, long before. That was a pure outright subdivision, under subdivision code at the time.
And, and they do have a community water system. As noted on some of the well reports, there were 700 feet deep. And there are some little pockets up there where even water is hard to come by, even some of those wells that are 700 feet deep were not free.
Like most of the county, we have an underlying rock layer that precludes water flow and et cetera, so.
Where we were generating drinking waters, not part of the zone.
Right? Yeah. And, and that's another discussion for another day.
So Commissioner Glasso, I'm gonna throw a twist in this. The county has elected to make comparison into the five to 10 acres from the comp plan. I personally read left to right, so I go one to five, five to 10, 10 to 20. So I wanna bring up one to five. It's because it says five. It doesn't say 1.48, it says one to five. For areas on the fringe of the, for areas on the, on or near the fringes of city impact, which may be within fire districts or sewer or water districts situated in the higher density development areas with public right-of-way access. Slopes are generally level to moderate, 0 to 10%. Expectations are for these areas to be served or annexed by nearby cities. And that's why I asked that question. I, I just propose that the other commissioners can take a look at this and, and consider, and consider that as well.
So Commissioner Davis, is, do we have the ACI map available?
Give me a minute.
It's in there somewhere. I mean, it's, yeah, it's back on the website, uh, file. Get out of there. Can't find it. No, I pulled up. I just, I presume. Let me share the screen. Collapse that. Do you want to stop sharing? There we go. So, no, the area is lined up pink here.
It's up in that corner.
Okay, so it's. The third road. So this is the area we're discussing this evening. This is the ACI. So wording in the plan says here, on the fringe or near.
Expectations are for these areas to be served or annexed by nearby cities.
Which is what the areas of city impact are always. That's the area that the code says, in that designated area, could certainly be considered available for annexation per under conditions applied. It's, it's interesting that, that the comprehensive plan language or, yeah, comprehensive plan, the land use, proposed land use section kind of goes beyond that. County had, uh, no, have, have the discussion started with Old Town above the ACI?
I know.
And, and even if it had, so what? It's not there yet. It's not relevant. All right, but it's very interesting, the fact that the ACI for Old Town is one of the gentler ACIs of all the cities in, in the county. Some of them are very large. This one is right up against, practically right up against city limits. For whatever reason, and how that was determined, we don't know. But it's interesting because one section of code says the ACI, and this one seems to say beyond the ACI. Where do you stop?
I just want to clarify, your, this section of the complaint you're reading is indicating that for rural five, that's where.
One through five.
One through five.
Then you have a five to 10.
So irrespective of, just, just pure size, not without a name to it.
Yeah, there's, there's.
There was the analysis done prior to creating the land use designation.
Right. And, and there's, there's more issues fraught in there too. Cause one, it says one to five and this is five to 10, which where does five fall? First discussion was second. It should say one to four point nine 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 nine, then five point zero to five point nine, nine point nine nine nine. Before something.
I know, at, at point they're getting away from the smaller parcels, so it's seem to be that, and Ken was one to five, and then five point one to 10.
Not really, there's no real five acre parcels. It's four point nine eight, just like nine point nine eight, 10 acre.
And, and so one to five at least has to be considered.
Again, that's, that's probably not a discussion for tonight.
Which is, which needs some land use, which is a part of finding a fact.
Let's stay on track here for this file.
Right, but it's a first finding of fact, which is why I bring this up.
Yeah.
So it doesn't need land in a comprehensive plan because the application states it must meet the, the comprehensive plan as well.
It does need it because it's, because of the rural land use designation. Because of the fact that it's already comp planned that way. It's comp planned to be fives and tens.
Yeah, for a reason.
It, it means it because it's already that way. Now what we're trying to do is make sure that the rezone matches the zoning code. We've already determined that it meets the comp plan. That, that's, not only have we done that, it's also stated in the zoning code. Zoning code says that these land use designations meet the comp plan. Now we just have to determine, does it meet the requirements of the zoning code? And that's what this application is for. We're not going back and redoing the comp plan today.
I think that's true in this case, but there are definitely examples of properties that don't meet the comp plan, that have the wrong language designation.
Oh yeah, we're going to bring you one that's, right?
That, that's a reality.
Yeah.
So it's, it's for the same reasons, I suppose, that we talked about with zone changes, which is we drew lines back then on section boundaries and so on and so forth. We didn't consider illegal properties.
Well, but even, there's properties that are designated rural residential, but they're zoned commercial. Let's get back to the zone.
Yeah. Now, there's, there's lots of issues to address, not in this file. Okay.
I find the no text to phone.
All right. So I'm looking for a motion, please.
Okay. This is Commissioner Davis. I'll get down to it here in a second. I move to recommend approvals of Lord County Commissioners's file ZC 0031-21, requesting a zone change from rural 10 to rural 5, finding that it is in accordance with general specific objectives of the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan. And the Bonner County Vice Code is enumerated in the following conclusions of law, and based upon the evidence submitted up to the time, the staff report which appeared in testimony received at this hearing, I've heard a little bit about. The findings of fact that concludes law set forth in the staff report and direct planning staff to draft written findings and conclusions to reflect this motion and transmit all to all interested parties. This action does not result in taking private.
Commissioner Davis has made a motion to approve ZC 0031-21 zone change. Play on revocable trust. Is there a second?
Uh, Commissioner Frankenbach, I'll second.
Commissioner Frankenbach has seconded the discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. It's six twenty-six, and our next file is V 0023-21 variance depth to width ratio. Kobe Shuenrock. Is requesting a depth to width ratio variance to create lots approximately 250 feet wide for the maximum permitted ratio of three to one to the proposed ratio of sixty-one, or six to one, based on the top topography hardships presented on the property. The sixteen point six one six acre property is zone rural five. The property is located at Lot One on Montia State Subdivision, Section 26, pound to fifty-eight north, range two west, Boise Meridian. Any conflicts of interest? During none, would staff present the project, please?
Good evening, commissioners. This is Patti from one of our design staff. This is a request for a depth to width ratio variance, where the applicant is requesting to vary the depth to width ratio from the required threes to one ratio to the proposed sixes to one. So the site is located off Snow Goose Lane, a county-owned right-of-way in Section 26, township fifty-eight north, range two west, Boise Meridian. Here is the proposed site plan, where the intent is to create two usable lots in a, in a property that is zone art five. The entire acreage is sixteen point six point six, and the applicant is requesting to create two approximately eight acre lots. The, that, the, as discussed before, the zoning is rural five and the land use designation is rural residential. It is platted as Lot One of Montia State Subdivision, and it is located in area of city impact of Sandpoint. So here is a map that shows the slopes on the site. The slope that shows in red is over thirty percent. So as we can see, the western half of the site is covered in steep slopes, while the eastern half is mostly the usable area. These are some environmental factors present on the site. There is, uh, seventy-five percent of the site is covered in non-prime farmland soil, twenty-five percent of the site is. Um, site is located in flood zone X, and it would not require any further flood drain review. No local state or federal agencies identify any critical wildlife areas. The sites are proposed to be served by individual wells, individual septic and rainwater systems. A north side fire district, northern lights utility company, school district, hospital district, and ambulance district. These agencies were notified of this request on September twenty-one, twenty twenty, twenty-one. We received two comments from Panhandle Health District and Morin County Flood Drain Review. Again, the flood drain review manager says that it wouldn't require any further flood drain review because the site is located in flood zone X. And Panhandle Health says this property was, uh, approved for only one lot uh, for the septic approval. However, the applicant needs to go back to Panhandle Health and get the approval for the other lot. Idaho Department of Fish and Game replied with no comments and no other agencies replied, no public comments perceived. These are the standards that are applicable to assessing a variance application. So there are typically three conditions that we look at when we review a variance application. The first is that the conditions apply to the property that do not generally apply for the properties in the same zone or vicinity. In this case, these conditions may generally apply to other properties in the vicinity because, because of the natural topography of the site. But the applicant had no control over these conditions, and each application for variance is assessed on a case-by-case basis, therefore it doesn't set a precedent in other cases. Special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant, which is true because the property, uh, as exists, had slopes on the western half of the property, which were, at least created, these conditions were not created by the applicant. The granting of the variance was not in conflict of the interest. Um, we did not receive any comments from the public agencies or from the public uh, pointing towards any harmful, uh, any harm to the public interest. So in, uh, general, these are the findings of the fact, the property is currently platted. It is accessed by Snow Goose Lane, which is a sixty feet wide local county road and a thirty feet wide. And the other lot could be accessed by thirty feet wide access easement. The area of the property is sixteen point six one acres. Uh, zoning designation is rural five, land use designation is rural residential, and the applicant is proposing to split the lots into two eight acre lots. The requested depth to width ratio variance is sixes to one, where maximum ratio threes to one is permitted. And the western half of the property shows presence of steep slopes. These conditions were not created by the applicant, creating a hardship for them, and therefore they are requesting this depth to width ratio variance. So in conclusion, these conditions do generally apply to other properties, may generally apply to other properties in the vicinity. But these conditions are not a result of the applicant's actions. And the granting of variance is not in conflict to the public interest. With that, staff recommends approval of this request, and I can begin any questions at this time.
Any questions for staff? So what is the applicant here tonight? Should they like to speak?
Uh, yes.
If you come up, sir, and name an address for the record.
Yeah. Uh, my name is Colby Shodrock, and I live at one zero zero two Pine Street in Sandpoint, just right on the corner here. Uh, we are hoping to subdivide this into two parcels, will be primary residence for my wife and I and our new daughter on one half, and the other half will be, um, some of our good friends. Um, they're going to be, they're single family residents as well. Uh, it does look like, kind of looking at the map, it's kind of about three and a half usual acres and then four and a half is up the hillside. So kind of our thought is, you know, we're now subdividing into three lots, three five acre lots, who are trying to split it right down the middle, where the houses sit, they're separate, they're not in any kind of, um, conflict with the neighbors. And then also the property to the direct, uh, south. Um, and looks like, which was plotted before this, does not quite match that one to three as well, because they're dealing with a similar steep slope going up the hillside into Kinnick's National Forest that we bordered in the back. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Okay, um. Close that, and, uh, did you want to add anything? Okay, so we'll close that and we'll open it up to public comment. Is there anybody? Is anyone online that would like to make a comment? Just raise your hand and I'll let you. Nope. So anybody in the audience?
Okay, so.
Buddy? Yeah, I own the beast property that's in front of him. And I have the easement for the back, and I'm just here supporting.
Name an address for the record.
Uh, my name is Rick, Rick Gammick, and my address is, uh, three three five eight North Crowe in Coles Falls, Idaho. And that will be my primary residence, so. But I have an easement that Lot One is how they get to their property, and for him to split it into two lots, I'm a hundred percent for that, so. That's the reason I came out tonight, just to support Colby.
Could you explain for me, what do you mean by in front of?
Well, my, my prop, yeah, uh, my, my place, I have five acres on North Boyer. It's one two nine seven four North Boyer, and his lot is exactly behind me. He's the same width. And I have an easement right away on the, would be the south side against my property line for them to get to the back.
So you're to the east of it?
Yes, I am. Yes.
Got it. So the, either of you, you won't be using Snow Goose to get to the property?
It's not even open right now.
Yeah, I know, it's just a, it's a.
I'll pull the timber off of it in one.
Public, public right of way, but the timber will just fall out. Anyway, okay, that, that clarifies that, because it, yeah, the patient said that it accesses Snow Goose, so. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Hey, so we'll close, uh, public comment and open it up for commissioners' deliberations. Please. So, that's a pretty hard area, it seems.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's.
Meeting up against the base of the law.
Very steep, yeah. And to, to divide it into three parcels, which it could be, based on the acreage, you have one way of high, you have one half in the middle of the slope, and one down below. So, and, and that would be three, but. Oh, that'd be a lot, maybe, but this would be an easier way to develop with a full land there.
And, and there's still money wide to have a house.
Two hundred fifty, two hundred thirty feet, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
This bit, one. Two lots are better than three in this case.
This is Commissioner Frankenbach. I move to approve this project file B zero zero two three dash two one. Requesting a depth and width ratio of variance for the purpose of creating lots approximately two hundred fifty feet wide. From the maximum permitted ratio of three to one to the proposed ratio of six to one. Finding that it is in accord with the Bonner County buyer code as enumerated in the following conclusions of law and based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared. The testimony received at this hearing. I further moved to adopt the findings of fact, the conclusions of law set forth in the staff report. And direct planning staff to draft written findings and conclusions to reflect this motion and transmit to all interested parties. The action that could be taken to obtain the variance is to complete the conditions of approval as adopted. This action does not result with taking a private property.
Commissioner Frankenbach has made a motion to approve file B zero zero two three dash two one variance depth and width ratio. Kobe Shonrock. Sir, second. Mr. Casey, second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Proposed, motion carries. It's six thirty-nine, our next file is AM zero zero one nine dash two one.
Thank you.
And ZC zero zero dash three two dash two one. Comprehensive plan map amendment on zone change. David Hunter is requesting a comprehensive plan map. Comprehensive plan map from ag forest to rural residential and zone change from rural ten to rural five. Twenty acre project is located on Winter Road, section seventeen, township fifty-four north. Range five west, Boise, Meridian, any conflicts at entrance? Gary Manland, staff, present the file, please.
Thanks, Commissioners, for being here tonight, members of the public, we appreciate your participation. Uh, so we're here tonight for a comprehensive land use plan. Amendment and a zone change that the applicant is proposing. Mr. Hunter is here with us tonight. Um, this is the allocation map of the property in relation to surrounding properties. Um, and as previously mentioned, they're asking to amend the comp plan from agricultural forestry land to rural residential. And of course, the zoning from R ten to R five. This is kind of another map showing the property situated in relation to other properties, kind of looking south there. Um, this is the current comp plan. And kind of another view, kind of zoomed out a bit, get more context here. And so we're looking at a twenty acre parcel. And Hunter Road is county owned but privately maintained. And I'm sure we'll hear from Mr. Hunter at some point tonight about how he's maintained it for many years. Um, there are some map slopes on the property, kind of in the northern part of it. Um, that yellow we see there is between fifteen and twenty-nine percent gray. The gold and or orange is thirty percent and above. Um, there is in a mapped riverine and we can see how that kind of follows the, um, intermittent stream system. Riverine just kind of buffers around it there. Through the property here, so I don't have a laser pointer. A couple of different types of soil on the property, um, you know. Two of which are characterized as prime farmland, one irrigated and then also not prime farmland, kind of looking in that northern area, kind of following that slope. We look at that thirty, that kind of the lighter green there, that's characterized as not prime farmland. So, going to have it on the slide here, so I'm just going to kind of look at the staff report for the flood plan review was reviewed by our certified flood plan manager, Jason Johnson. Um, and it was found to be in flood zone X, which is a one in five hundred year chance or probability of flooding. Uh, no, no further flood plan review was required for this property, um, since we're looking at a zone change today and not a development plan. These are the applicable standards we used to review the file. We routed it to the following agencies. And we got some comments back, again, I apologize about my slideshow here. Here's a bit not updated. So, um, couple of comments, uh, Fishing Game said they don't have any comments to submit for this application. Um, we got some no comment responses from Inland Power and Light. I'll just go back here. Um, Department of Land said no comment. Um, and on the staff report, you'll see that it says all agencies did not, all their agencies did not respond. That is correct in the time in which the staff report was prepared. Um, however, we did receive a comment today, um, and this is just for context, it's not going to be included in staff analysis. Um, at nine forty-one AM from Spirit Lake. And per Chief D Bernardi, this is Tammy, his assistant. Uh, in review of this project on Hunter Road, the access egress is limited to one way and one, one way in and one way out. As home density increases and the area grows, this will impact our ability to provide services to residents. Um, and then there's a mention of the large Hunter Fire with seven hundred acres, the limited access to egress affected our fire fighting abilities. Um, there should be road improvements on Hunter Road for increased density. Um, they then go on to mention another zone change that isn't in relation to this file. Um, finally ending with Hunter Road needs to be paved, widened and have two points of access egress for current, for the current density to be functional for future growth. Um, and then thanks Tammy, bottom there, so just want to include that for context for the commissioners tonight. So when we look at the land use plan for agricultural forestry designation and the rural residential. Um, one of the things that I'm actually going to go back here just briefly to touch on this. Um, I think when we look at this property and its, and its relation to the comp plan. Um, you know, as that stands today, it's not consistent with the comprehensive land use plan. Which is to say that the comprehensive land use plan for agricultural forestry land is between ten and twenty acre agricultural forestry zone property. And so we're looking at a rural ten acre zone property, so I just want to kind of start with that, um, disclosure there. And we'll kind of look at the two different designations and so agricultural forestry land, um, comp plan, you know, the land use is looking at, you know, served by private roads. Um, or state roads, urban services are, are not available. Um, residential development challenges are present due to slope or soil conditions, hazard areas and lack of police or fire services. And then when we look at the rural residential land use plan, um, you know, areas provided for residential development in areas where urban services are not available and slopes may vary up to thirty percent. Areas include hazard areas, critical wildlife habitats. Where lower densities reduce potential impacts to resources, exposures to lots of property or lives, small scale agricultural uses and residential development are permitted. So, one of the things I, I want to touch on too with this is, um, you know, we noticed US and Fish and Wildlife Service, they did not comment. Uh, Idaho Department of Fishing Game did not comment and or identify critical wildlife habitat. And of course, Army Corps was also notified for that riverine that runs to the property, they also did not comment. So when we look at the land use, um, you know, steeper slopes don't prevail on the property. Um, property doesn't have poor soil conditions, um, one of the, one of the soils featured on the property is prime farmland if irrigated to. Um, the property does have access by privately maintained county owned road. Um, there are properties to the south that are zone rural five acre. Um, there's not, there's not a lack of police or fire services, um, it's afforded fire protection is within the Spirit Lake Fire District, that's why they commented. Um, and then so moving on to the zoning, uh, district, um, the applicant is requesting to, to move this from rural ten acre to rural five acre. Um, and I believe the purpose is for a family division and I'll let him elaborate on that. Um, and so, you know, rural ten is, is characterized by slopes that are steeper than thirty percent. Located within critical wildlife habitat is identified by federal, state or local agencies. Contain primex soils, serve by a network of public and or private roadways that don't generally meet the applicable roadway standards set forth in Title II or Title XII of Appendix A. Within a floodway contain limited access to public services. And then where we kind of contrast that is in the R five zoning designation. We look at, does the, does the property fit better with the R five insofar as it doesn't fit better with the R ten? Um, or has it been developed in a way that reflects the R five density? And I'll let Mr. Hunter elaborate on, on what's currently on the property in terms of housing and the fact. Um, he has the opportunity to speak here. So when we look at this, uh, R ten designation, uh, the property, staff conclude the property is not characterized by slopes that are steeper than thirty percent, while there is some slope. Kind of in the northern part of the property, it's not generally, generally characterized by steeper slopes. Um, Fishing Game, US, US Fish and Wildlife Service didn't identify any critical wildlife habitat. There are certainly primex soils on the property, two of the soils, and as we saw, you know, the non, uh, the non, the, the soil rather, characterizes not prime farmland, it kind of follows that slope out to the north there. Certainly, the, the property is accessed by a private road, that's, that's not county maintained. Um, however, it's not within a floodway and it is afforded fire protection and other public services, police and ambulance district and not. Um, and so based upon that analysis and looking at the differentiation between rural ten acre and rural five acre. Um, staff did find this to, to fit better with the rural five acre zoning district. And here's kind of all of that that I just said repeated on the slides here and so staff is recommending approval. Um, and at this point, I can take any questions from the commissioners.
Any questions, staff?
Commissioner Reed, can you pull up the zoning map, please, so we can take at the front, look at the properties around that property?
Sure.
From what I've seen, there are no other five acre parcels around that property, they're all. So, the rural ten and the south and west ag forest twenty.
Yeah, so there is, yeah, ag forest twenty and, and there's ag forest ten above. Um, not too far to the south, we do have rural five acre, but again, if we look at the, the ordinance for the zoning ordinance, that's what we have to assess this based off of. Um, and so while I think that is a good comment and it's useful to kind of look in terms of what's around the area, we have to look at the ordinance and that's how staff has to make our decisions.
Kind of looks like spot zoning here. Was there's new ones around it, um, if you go nap, watch the property, you see.
I, I have not gone on the property.
Yeah, rural, yeah.
Any other questions, staff? Mr. Hunter, would you like to come up and speak out your mission, please?
My name is Dave Hunter, I live at thirteen ninety-seven hundred road. Um, I've been on this property since, uh, about nineteen ninety-seven. Um, when I first moved here, there was no, it was all rural ten. And so, in the last maybe two years, all the blue you see here. Is all been switched over to, to five rural fives. So if you go right here, these are all in process here, this isn't updated, I don't think. But this is actually another rural five. And if you come down here to where it says Herd Lane, there's actually a road that goes all the way across to the substation along the power line. There's a power line that goes all the way across through here. And so there is another road, we have the fire, the fire department actually used access that road. There's actually also a forest service road that goes through there. Um, it was a goat trail when I moved there, I improved the road over the last twenty some years. And, uh, so there's plenty of room for people to go in and out. What I'm trying to do here is I have two residences on the property, one was established in approximately two thousand and eight. And so. I'm a single dad and I have two beautiful girls and a grandson, what I'm trying to do is make it so. When I leave this earth, they don't have to go through what I'm going through now to subdivide the land. And the other thing is too, is it showed a flood ravine that comes down through there. I challenge anybody to find any water that flows into my property anywhere. And then they say it's also ag. I challenge anybody to dig a hole anywhere on my land and get anything more than four inches of top floor before they hit ground. So, that being said, when the fire came through, I lost probably three quarters of any good timber that I had. So, and the trees there to get replanted, we already tried to find out about getting them replanted. It's almost impossible to have anything but a natural tree on the upper slopes of that property. They just don't take root, you're just knocking into gravel and they just don't take root, so. That's about really all I have to say, all the property that's kind of deceiving. There's been over, I think, sixty-eight homes built on that road. In the last three years and in there in the process now of subdividing other pieces now that, you know, you guys got your signs up showing that. People are adding to that, so all the way up there, higher road, all the way, I think this portion right here. And then this portion right here, I know that the guy that's buying that is going to try to subdivide that. So, and then this was all been subdivided in the last, maybe a year and a half to two years, so. I really don't have a whole lot else to say, but I'm just trying to subdivide the one property out. The fifteen acres will remain in my family permanently, I, I own it, I have no plans of selling it. Uh, and that would make it easier for my two dollars and my grandson when I'm not here anymore, so. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Mr. Hunter, how, how much water can you create in your well?
I have two wells on the property, one's approximately twenty gallons a minute and the other is six gallons a minute.
Sixty?
Six.
Six.
And then the property right next to mine, which would be right here, this just sold here. He just put in a well, I think he's a hundred and sixty feet, he's about forty gallons a minute. So I'm closer to the base of the hill. So the further you get away, you're more the aquifer. So if you look at the well reports, the further down the bottom of the property you go, the better the water is.
So, but, but my point is, you don't have enough water to irrigate your fields.
No, and I don't, I've tried to grow orchards there, I put in tons of manure and. The root system gets down a certain amount of way and they just suck, so.
That's the problem with the soil.
But now you go just right over from my place, where it says Stips and Court there, right, actually right back here. She's got an alfalfa field that's probably sixty acres and it's beautiful, beautiful soil, so.
And she has water?
She has lots of water, she has springs that come down the property, in fact, the guy on Easy Street above me, when I first moved there, the prior owner. Where we were hiking up there, we found a little seep. And they dug it up and it produces, you, you can't ever empty it, I mean, it produces a lot, but it's up above me. And that's probably the only place water comes down to that side hill, so. In fact, Easy Street, I don't know if they even have a well, it was all sister and spring water. And that's in a rocky part where it just popped out of water, but I don't have anything like that on my land, so. I wish I did.
Thank you, sir.
Sir, I had two questions.
You're sorry?
So you, uh, mentioned that for yourself and your daughters, your grandson, you're always going to keep the fifteen and so the five acre, your, they'll just sell off?
Yes, ma'am, with, uh, it's got a double white on it, it's got an existing well, existing power, existing septic. And it runs right straight up Hunter Road, so, and there's a lot of other roads in there, I don't. I mean, the fire department's been back there a lot of times and we have literally hundreds of units back there when the fire came through. And I didn't see, he may think eventually with the density building, that it could eventually be a problem. But for the fire, they all got right in there, they didn't really have much to complain.
So, to break the question, why not two tens? If it's zone pretend, I'm just curious, I'm just curious, why not two tens? If it's zone pretend, it just seems like it'd be a little bit easier.
Well, five acres for my daughter Cheyenne, five acres for Jade and five acres for Riley, my grandson. So, that's how that will go.
Any other questions for Mr. Hunter?
I have one. I can.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Dave, how wide is the travel lay of, uh, Hunter Road?
It's approximately thirty feet.
Okay.
Yeah.
So typically you need ten on our side for us to pass.
Yeah, there's, and there's pullouts that we built before, I mean, I built, when I first looked at this property. I actually got a big suburban four by four stuck in a mud puddle and they pulled me out with a three fifty cat and that's how I looked at the property. We went back down a three fifty cat to look at that property in about ninety-seven is when I purchased it. And I paid it off in, I think, two thousand and one, so. I've been back there before. And I paid it off in, I think, two thousand and one. So I've been back there before. I mean, we had two hundred elk used to one through my property. And now your luck used to be about sixteen a year. So it's grown up a lot. And the fire took out a lot, so.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Okay, so we will open for public comment. Anybody in the public wish to comment? Anybody online?
If anyone on the line wants to make a comment, just raise your hand.
Okay, we'll close public comment and move on to commissioners' favor issues. So the, the term if irrigated in, here's the drift on that. The sixty three hydrology report said the only irrigation water is in Kokalawa Valley, the Kokalawa Flats and the Hoota Valley. And so some of the farms that can hit a good effort, they can grow, grow crops out. There's no ditch irrigation water out there and that's, that's my big beef about this. So, you know, you can do anything to get that water, but if you don't have water, say it's magnetic ground, they might as well hard soil somewhere else. That again, like the, you know, the soils, creep forests or
Yes, one of my concerns with this is I can see where the gentleman needs it. It would be beneficial to him, but what's going to happen if we start approving soils?
Well, we are in the area. We've done a bunch of those there, but it's not on that one map. That map has not been updated in the past couple of years.
Yeah, that, this is Commissioner Davis. That area is in the process of changing. They have a number of zone changes. And minor land divisions. I know it's not a hundred percent relevant. The Southwest County Committee, they looked at that area and in general, they recognized it as a rural residential five and ten acre. But again, we haven't dealt with that with their description of their designations. Close to highway forty one. Not steep terrain. Services are there and coming. Appreciate what the fire department said, but as Mr. Hunter said, the road has been approved.
I think that I, I was impressed by what the fire department said, but if he wants to develop that property and build it, he's going to have to come back again. And he will have to show there's an adequate, adequate road at that time, I believe.
Yeah. Part of the application process to show what it is.
Hunter Road is a private road designated by the county maintained and then off Hunter Road comes in matters. Also.
Yeah.
Well, it's not on the map, though. It's not, it's really. Well, no, but the map has not been updated for two years with pictures. That, that's the problem. So it's bad, it's a bad presentation because you know, the colors haven't changed.
Doesn't, doesn't reflect reality.
Today, it reflects two thousand and eight and not today. So that's, that's upstairs problem for not changing the colors.
So let's, let's ask.
Oh, there?
Yeah, it's actually over there.
Let's ask Chad.
Chad, straighten this up.
So we do go back to the, to the zoning map. And inform us which parcels have changed from what the colors say. And we remember that there are some recent ones. I just can't remember exactly how close to this parcel.
So I think the one that I'm aware of that had actually changed pretty recently is this one here. I, to be honest, I, I created a pretty long and extensive Excel sheet, but it was a couple of weeks ago and had it been more recent, I would have had a better idea. But I think this one recently changed.
That's, that's what I remember too.
Yeah.
That's, that was relatively recently.
Recently. This one did as well? Okay. Was that your file, Daniel?
Yes.
Okay. So, yeah, Daniel's saying that this one as well was recently changed.
I believe we did go through.
Yeah, we did go through a lot of this discussion with those zone change requests and how it's, it's just beginning to change that area. And granted, this one is purportedly for family use. That's, that's great. Some of the other ones were not, but it's interesting because either a lot is created to put on the market and sell and then someone from the area or from out of the area is going to buy it. Here, there's people already there that apparently very well be using the subsequent lots. So it's, it's in that sense, new residents.
So five will be, Mr. Sellit, you don't know this?
Sure, the one that, just in order to finance things. So either way, and it's about, those are probably three thirty, the two lots to the south of Mr. Hunter's. They look like they're three thirty by six sixty. So we're roughly six sixty away from five acres only existing.
And eventually we'll probably go a little ways.
Well, and so I tried to recall, you know, as, as we're going to deal with what Southwest County Committee recommended, they had quite an extensive area down here that, that comp plan again. Not zoning, but comp plan, rural residential. So it could cut either way.
I'd say at a minimum that the fact that the comp plan is at forest land, it just isn't consistent with zoning. And so that, I, we, we, you know, Jake, the assistant director and I have discussed in the future of looking at the possibility of the county sponsor comp plan amendment for this whole kind of area of R ten. But I mean, it's just not as is right now. It's not consistent, that part of these ten piece.
Yeah, so that's a good, that's a good starting point, I guess you'd say.
I, I guess the only reservation I have, we heard this comment from the fire chief several times, if I recall, in, in zone change applications in this general area. I don't know specifically on this road. I don't remember. But he's definitely got a concern about access. And it's not clear to me, you know, when you cross over kind of break point and, and create a real problem. And, and, and then if that's the case, how do we recognize it? And, and when this, when we do something about it? I assume at some point, the county would have to look at, well, maybe we need to upgrade the road infrastructure in that area in order to be able to provide sufficient fire services. But that's my only reservation and I appreciate that you say it's a wide road and a lot of trucks in there. And, and there's the other road, the service, the power line and so forth. But, but this is, I don't know, I don't know how to evaluate that in the context of the fire chief's comment because he, he chimes in almost every time we have a zone change in this area.
Yeah, I, I think just in response to that, certainly, there's a lot of roads out there that are far less high standard than this one.
Yeah.
And he's faced with all of that.
Right.
Trying to get it, but the under fire, yeah, that was a, a major, major thing. A lot of people showed up, a lot of vehicles came in from all directions to buy it. It was not a problem. And whether he took that into, the, the fire district took that into account directly in relation to this, we don't know. The other part is, as this area develops, that's one thing that the county needs to push after is the continuation, extension, expansion of the road system through land development. That's typically in this age, that's how roads come about. The county's not in the business to go out there and carve a road across private property or whatever, buy easements and so forth. Those days are probably over. So it's going to have to come through land development. And very much like what Mr. Hunter has done, is to provide for themselves, but then also to an extent to provide for the neighbors as well. Yeah, I think, and I, I, I know from going out there at some of those other roads that are shown on the right end of the picture, those are very much the roads that the fire chief is concerned about because some of those get down into the single tracks. Uh, it's just, oof, some rough stuff up there.
Well, we have the same stuff in Priest River. Oh, all of the counties, I mean, it's, the log roads return to the earth for easements and all over the county. So it's a, I, I know, one of the biggest concerns all the fire districts have is the limitation, what we get what they are. Eventually, and that's again, that's where the county code comes in and must really start looking at that, which is right there, the transportation, all of the comprehensive plan says it too. Now, go for those road systems, make sure that there's provision in the code that's going to, to whatever extent available, require connections and looping roads and so forth, so you don't end up with these two mile long cul-de-sacs. So. Well. I envision one day it'll be a city of Lancher.
Yeah.
Twenty, thirty years.
Some people think it's there already. The city of Lancher, say, no, sorry. But it, it could happen. Sure, that's just, take it figure out what a tax base is. I don't think the resort out there is a tax base. Okay. Okay, guys.
Maybe if you want and kept it a ten, that would still be eight structures to build for his kids.
Yeah.
Maybe three and three.
It doesn't, it doesn't end up, doesn't end up.
We can't, obviously, let the person go on and say, but as it sits, take, take a few words, it's going to be.
Commissioner Reed? I'll make a motion. I'm, I'm going to recommend denial to board and commissioners of this file, AM zero zero one nine dash two one, requesting comprehensive land use plan amendment from Ag Forest Land of Rural Residential Baseball Own conclusions. The project fails to meet we should move proposal, not in place of all known comprehensive plan conclusion to this proposal not in compliance title twelve on a county rights code. And it's bound to not be in compliance, the proposal is not in accord with the rural residential land use designation. The decision is based, let's see, the decision is based upon evidence submitted at the time the staff report was prepared and testimony received at the hearing. I further move to adopt the findings of that day conclusions law set forth in staff report and indirect planning staff to draw great claims and conclusions, review that motion, transmit all parties. This action does not result in the taking of property. The action can be taken if we need to obtain the comprehensive land use plan amendment is to file a new application, funding department. Need standard required by county rights code to pursue such remedies as may be applicable at title six, seven, chapter sixty five, item.
Commissioner Reed has made a motion to deny AM zero zero one nine dash two one and ZC zero zero three two dash two one comprehensive plan map amendment and zone change, David Hunter. Is there a second?
Fisher Glasser will second it.
Commissioner Glasser has a second. Any discussion?
Yes. I believe the way the motion was stated, because first off, the staff recommended approval and the motion referenced as written in the staff report. So that it's a conflict if the, the major of the motion could clarify which elements of the comprehensive plan are not followed and what is, why it is not consistent with the code. I think that would help. Right now, I, I think it's in conflict. It doesn't, the motion doesn't go with what was stated.
It doesn't flow with conclusion one, two, and three?
Well. Yeah, it, it's just, okay. Right. I mean, if you want the motion to be valid, I would say. So come on. Because so the recommendation, staff recommendation was for approval based on these findings of fact, which, so either, either in the conclusions of law, number one, if you're saying conclusion one, the proposal is not in accord with the following elements. And typically, we would specify a few of those as it's not in compliance. Second, conclusion stating that is not found in compliance with title twelve, where and well, rural residential land use designation still applies. But perhaps it's in the findings of fact, and which of those findings of fact are not, your finding are not relevant or not correct. Your finding are not relevant or not correct.
Do you want to make that a moment?
No. I'm not gonna make a little motion.
What's that?
Fix your motion and withdraw it.
I can fix the motion with saying it doesn't meet conclusion one. It's not important for all the elements, only can it can't comprehensive plan?
None of them? That because.
Do we have to name it everywhere?
Well, the last, the last few cases that we recommended denial, we have specifically said it doesn't meet. This component, this component, this component. Yeah. That's, that's one reason why.
The board's gonna wanna know why.
Yeah, why?
Why are you recommending denial? What if you found wrong with the application in the findings of fact that conclusions of law? That are different from what staff recommended, but it's still saying. Because the board, the board just sits there and goes, why did they recommend denial?
We have to, they state why, why doesn't it be code, what what's wrong? If it's saying, we're not gonna go with the staff's recommendation, why? How, how, how does the staff recommendation not? Uh parallel our conclusion that this should be denied?
I see conclusion one, I can name, I can name transportation hazardous area. Community design, land use. And that would be conclusion one, based on that. And conclusion three, the proposal is not in accord with rural residential land use designation. Um it fits better with the current designation. Based on the current, assuming that land use.
If you're staying, make that statement.
Commissioner Reed has. Amended her motion. Is there a second?
Commissioner Glasser, Professor Glasser accepts the amendment.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion fails. Okay. We use three.
Uh so it's Commissioner Frankabach. Uh I moved to recommend approval to the board of county commissioners on this project file, AM zero zero one nine dash two one. Requesting a comprehensive plan use. Comprehensive land use plan amendment from Ag Forest Land to rural residential, finding that it is in accord with the general and specific objectives of the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan. And Bonner County Advice Code is enumerated in following conclusions of law and based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report is prepared. The testimony received at this hearings. I further move to adopt the findings of fact and conclusions of law as set forth in the staff report. And direct planning staff to draft written findings and conclusions to reflect this motion and transmit to all interested parties. This action does not result in taking a private property.
Commissioner Frankabach made a motion to approve AM zero zero one nine. Dash two one and ZC zero zero three two dash two one, comprehensive plan map amendment and zone change. Mr. David Hunter, is there a second?
Commissioner Casey with a second.
Commissioner Casey with a second, any discussion? Hearing not on, favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries three to two. We're gonna push on here. Seven twenty two.
There's still one more motion.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, we had to go to some change.
That was the, that was the plan amendment.
Yes, sir. So it's seven twenty two and we'll move to the next one.
There's a second motion, there should be a second motion for the zone change, I think. Rule ten, rule five. Okay, sorry.
It is, it is, I I'm I'm not convinced that it's not a better fit for rural.
Yeah.
You know, and what it says is rule ten where it beats one or more of the following criteria. Uh it doesn't beat the slow criteria since it's relatively flat. Um not critical wildlife habit, habitat, but it does contain primex soils. And. I'm not sure what to conclude really about the network of public and or private road race that generally do not meet applicable roadway standards. You know, we, there's some concerns about the road. I'm not really sure where that one falls. Um it's not in a floodway. Doesn't have limited access to public service, it's one or more and it's. Further away the code is written, it's got primex oils. I understand. I understand all the other stuff, but. We have to go with what we have, so I I'm I'm up in the air about whether it's better. As it better fits a ten or or a five, if it's rural residential. So that's my hesitation.
So okay, maybe explain for me under, just a little bit more clear than. You're saying that it is primex soils, that the the descriptor of not, or if irrigated isn't.
I don't understand how to interpret that, I guess.
Right.
Um does that?
So our, our analysis in the past is that it it is not described that way. Those, those descriptors aren't described in the code and that's. Yeah, are they described that way in the phone plan? And being primag.
No.
So see, that's the, that's the challenge with it is that we.
Because I get back to my comment earlier, we have gaps, so we have properties that don't fit in any designation, and we have overlaps, properties.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So we need to fix those descriptions.
Yes, we do, yeah, okay, I just, I just making sure we're taking alike.
Yeah, I, and I say, I'm, I'm.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, Bonner County, there's very, very little of the whole area that's got prime land.
Well, that's, that's stated in the soil survey.
Well, we've never had any irrigation issues, right?
See, that's, that's the, that's the problem with the, the soil report thirty nine. Goes ties into the, the, the sixty three hydrology. And when I look on some of these, uh county roads don't have it, but state. Main, state owned, county maintained roads have it. Drainage ditches in irrigation. Okay, so somewhere when the state was growing up, they were thinking about possibly bringing irrigation. In this. We would have irrigation. No, 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 because we're taking, we're taking ground. Where there is no water, and they're saying, take it up prime left, if irrigate. But if there's no water, then what good is?
And here irrigation is surface irrigation, it's not ditches, southeast ditches.
The hydrology reports is sixty three, Hudu Valley and Kokola, that's where the, that's where the irrigation waters.
And 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 if you look back in the fifties, that's what happened in both those areas. They revised creeks, Kokola Creek is a straight creek. Right from one end to the other, because it was revised and ditched in order to irrigate the fields. And in some cases drain them. Talk to the farmers down there, that's what they did. And same with Hudu. So, but typically, yeah, it's not the same scenario and whole setup as seen southeast Idaho, south central. Where they got canals, canals, canals. Those are district, those are Viking districts and so forth. Cootie Valley. Cootie Valley is a drainage district. Couldn't root, so. It, it works there, but not here. But the testimony here has been, they're from a resident landowner. It may be four inches of what's called prime ag soil that irrigated, but you can't. You can't, it doesn't work. So again, you know, there's this individual property testimony that. Refutes the broad brush studies that were done in the thirty nine, sixty, eighty five, eighty three. Um with no surprise, it happens a lot, we've seen a lot, there's some areas that are squarely in those and it's correct. But fringe areas or minimal areas that they didn't go out and spoon shovel every twenty feet to see what the depth was and condition. And we know they didn't do that. And unless you've worked with soil survey from eighty three, it was spot check at best, so. So I'm not concerned about the primax soil. Uh yeah, it's, it's a bit tenuous looking at this property going to five because it isn't adjacent to. But it's certainly marching that way. You can argue all the precedent setting stuff that you want to, but. It's coming and it's, it's an area that. Is probably more suited to. Five acre lots than tens and twentys.
You know, in, in, in North Idaho, our primary soil is the Rappin Prairie, unfortunately.
And even there, I know farmers, my family, my wife's family, there's farmers on the Rappin Prairie. And they're constantly complaining about, you put water on the ground and it just goes right through that thin soil and down into two hundred feet of gravel. Just push, it's just you can't put enough water, fortunately, you're over the aquifer and they've got six hundred gallon fermented wells. They just keep blowing it on, it goes right through.
Exactly, water.
They need to mulch it.
Yeah, well, they're, they're, they're. Almost a century now, they've been trying to figure out the best way to farm it, that's why you don't see too many crop farms out there anymore. That were. So.
And as it says, you know, where to look at all the properties around it. You have lots of goals and the objectives and different things like that and preserve the agriculture nature of that area.
Yeah. It's a better.
A lot of good people wrote those documents, but they were under the gun and there were a lot of mistakes and a lot of changes and. I'd make changes with staff and everything else, things get missed. We're here, keep seeing. It's my son's job, it's very important on the swine and wrestling gang last year. Let's get it right. I think they didn't have it right, a lot of things were missed.
Can I interject for just a quick?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Thank you, commissioners, um I just wanted to show you, this is actually the USDA's. Um soil lab soil survey, and so just looking at this, it's quite interesting because. You know, there was three soils in my staff report, and so I'm not sure where that date is from, but there are actually a variety of soils if you look at this area. Um and maybe I'm, maybe having a cutoff here, maybe there is indeed three soil types, but um. It, it would just be interesting to check with GIS at some point and and see how recent that data is that they have that's on our map and. And sure that. Probably, that probably is, but, yeah. This is likely where it's pulled from, that's my assumption.
That was the, the data. The digital version was based on the eighty three survey. Uh with the no, no new underground survey. Well. Here it grows trees. If you look at that aerial that was included in the file, you can see the evidence of that, tree harvests all over the place. And tree planting all over the places, rows and rows of trees and properties to the salt rush and replanted. Most of which is lodgepole pine and ponderosa pine. They can deal with shallow soils, they can deal with putting their fingers down into gravel. There's only in that aerial that we see, I only see two. Farm fields. There's one. Over there by Stone Road and Stone Road Cut Off to the north, and there's that triangular shape which Mr. Hunter alluded to, the alfalfa field, that one. That's telling. It's not a farm area. It's just, I mean, people, I'm sure people tried, but over there on the other side of forty one, where it's wet. Low and lowy soils, that's where people have farmed historically. The forays and so forth, I mean, all those people that that developed. Blanchard. From a hundred and twenty years ago on. But this area grows trees and this, this kind of tree has mostly been grown for pulp.
Great, a motion.
Great. Great for a motion.
Uh Commissioner Frankabach, uh I move to recommend approval to the board of county commissioners on this project file, ZC zero zero three two dash two one. Requesting a zone change from rural ten to rural five, finding that it is in accord with the general and specific objectives of the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan and Bonner County Advice Code. As enumerated in the following conclusions of law and based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. I further move to adopt the findings of fact, conclusions of law as set forth in the staff report. And direct finding staff to draft written findings and conclusions to reflect this motion and transmit to all interested parties. This action does not result in taking a private property.
Commissioner Frankabach has made a motion to approve ZC zero zero three two dash two one, comprehensive plan map amendment. Zone change, David Hunter, is there a second?
Mr. Davis will second that motion.
Commissioner Davis with a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Guys, wanna take a break or go to Verizon? All right, let's keep going. Our next file is MOD zero 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 seven dash two one, conditional use permit modification. Verizon Wireless is requesting to modify their site plan and power design for communication.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate your help.
You're welcome, Mr. Hunter. Seven acre property is zone recreational, the project is located up. A private easement that connects to Meter Bay Road, county owned and maintained road. In section seventeen, township sixty one north, range four west, Boise Meridian. Any conflicts of interest?
Have Verizon and security.
No, we all do. All yours, sir.
All right, thank you, thanks again, commissioners, um so. You'll notice the staff report is a little lengthy, and the reason for that being is, and I just wanna kind of explain before we even get into this. Um is, when we checked this site, um so this was previously approved in two thousand and one, I think, early two thousand and one. Um we noticed the apron that they originally proposed in their site plan was a bit larger, and then we were looking at the tower and like, okay. Design's a little bit different, so that's why we're here today, there's a number of modifications to that site plan. And um I think what had happened is kind of a last minute thing, it was noticed with the wrong site plan in that original CP. So this is just to kind of cover all those bases so that we um can approve this tower as it's situated today and and all the additions and and changes that have been made. So, um you know, starting off, there's a, there's a variety of things that are changing here, obviously, the entire site plan, the road design. The curvature, the compound dimensions, what's in the compound generators, um the tower design, the setbacks. Um one thing just to note briefly is the setbacks in really overall haven't changed much and and. Where there was a deviation for an administrative variance that was previously granted, it's now been increased in terms of um the setback distance. And so that deviation's actually less than it was before. Um this is the current site plan, kind of showing the tower in relation to the, the proposed road design for this modification. Um and as we can see here, kind of looking at the left hand. And as we can see here, kind of looking at the left hand side here. This is what was originally proposed with that conditional use permit, so we can just kind of see that the road is a bit different. Also, it's access to the site a little bit different. On here. So again, kind of shows a different road design there. There's a bit of a difference with the compound size, so instead of a thirty by, sorry, they built a forty by forty-three compound, originally proposed thirty by thirty. Access gate's still, you know, twelve feet wide, it's just that there's a different place in which the tower will be accessed, I think, from the So they also put a thirty kilowatt, I don't know if I'm saying that right, generator onsite where is originally a twenty was proposed. An ice bridge for protection, kind of walking to the tower to protect from snow. And the, the ice tower, sorry, the ice bridge was originally on the site plan, they just moved the location. Again, just staff work kind of trying to cover all these things here. There's a new ice canopy, again, protection for the workers going to inspect the tower and maintenance it. Microwave equipment cabinet, twenty foot wide double swing cattle access gate situated near the easement from the entry to the northeast. Floodlights as required, again, just kind of safety there. So as we can see on the left, originally a monopole tower was proposed with that conditional use permit and what we actually had built was a lattice tower. And you'll notice in my staff report, I kind of, in, in many respects, kind of copy pasted and tried to kind of summarize the reason why the tower design changed from monopole to lattice. Roughly speaking, the issue was, you know, there was just a lot of rock that they had to drill into and so this was more of a stable design. Albeit, the, the height of the tower, that previous proposal of a hundred and seventy foot feet did not change. And so again, kind of looking at these property line, slight, you know, increase from the western property line as well as the eastern property line. And the southern property line, that's where that deviation was from that administrative variance, we actually increased that setback here. And then also again, in the northern property line, increasing that setback to from two hundred and fourteen to two hundred and eighteen feet and some nine inches. So there's definitely a lot of slope on the property. You know, it's a seven acre parcel, it's zone recreation, it's in the resort community land use designation. It's accessed by a private easement. No wetlands, streams, doesn't front a lake. One type of soil, nothing remarkable here, characterized as not prime farmland and moderately well drained. You know, and they, on the application, they indicated that there was going to be no sewage water services to the property. But that it was within a fire district, is powered by northern lights and then Bonner School District eighty-three. These were the standards we used to review the modification to that conditional use permit. We routed it to the following agencies. If I'm going too fast here, please let me know, I just have a number of slides I'm trying to get to. Federal Health commented no comment. Fishing Games said, you know, reviewing our previous comments, no changes or modifications are necessary to our original comments. We didn't receive any public comments for this file, either in support or opposition. I just will touch briefly on fishing games previous comment from that conditional use permit, it's in my staff report. And I did kind of summarize, it's not their entire letter. I can find my place here. You know, they just talked about birds, broadly speaking nesting and, and if there's, you know, they need to remove a nest, that they contact the right proper agency, which in this case is US Fish and Wildlife. I would just note that in their conclusion, they said that they don't anticipate, we do not anticipate significant adverse impacts on fish or wildlife due to the proposed communication towers. We recommend that lighting be as minimal as possible to avoid disturbance of nocturnal birds. But understanding there, you know, the lighting, the flood lighting is at a lower level, it's not at the height of the tower, like the peak of it, because it's not in excess of two hundred feet. So again, you know, we, we review this with the revised code, you know, there's no parking standards. You know, they, they designed it to be, you know, to be sufficient and adequate with FCC requirements. They're making no changes to signage as originally proposed. It's in the recreational zoning district, which is consistent with the revised code and so far as allows for communications towers to be permitted on property as so long as it's a conditional use permit. Also, just went back through the whole site plan and looked at the communication tower standards. And, and we'll talk about one of the conditions of approval tonight about that, the tower, the, sorry, the fencing height being in excess of that seven feet. Six feet is required, so they're good there. They're good with all the setbacks, we need the height of the tower, the one that we're kind of deviating from, we are increasing that setback, so it's not like we're deviating more from that administrative variance that was previously approved. You know, the, they had previously provided adequate evidence to the commission from what I saw in the previous staff report, that tower was a convenience and necessary facility. But I think there was a number of letters actually written in favor of this tower originally. You know, it's, it's the tower, the due, due design being lattice was lattice tower instead of a monopole. You know, the architect, the Idaho licensed architect indicated that the tower was designed per, you know, industry standards. It has been designed to co, to allow for future colocation as required by the code. And, and this standard in the code is, is unique. Twelve forty-eight F says communication tower shall meet all operational instruction and lighting standards of the Federal Aviation Administration. My recollection, they were notified, they did not comment. They will if something is in excess of two hundred feet in height or is within, I think, five miles of the, the distance from an airport for registration purposes, as well as the FCC, so they didn't comment. You know, we asked the applicant to also demonstrate that distance to any nearby airports and they did with the tollware determination from the, through the FCC, they ran a, a a query, so to speak, with their lat long coordinates. And then, of course, if they're going to commute, if they're going to terminate the tower, you know, if it's not being used in less than, for a period of not less than one year, they shall remove it along with all the equipment. That's just a requirement for the code. Again, you know, all the flammable material, storage. The, the Idaho licensed architect was very specific about how all those things would be stored in conformance with the international fire code. You know, again, they're not really changing anything with the, the signage. They're not using the tower for any kind of flags. So, you know, staff reviewed this modification request, we did find it consistent with the Bonner County Revised Code. There is just one thing I want to correct for the record that was brought to my attention by the applicant's project representative, Derek. I think that I, I, in somewhere in the staff report, I indicated a number of microwave dishes and my, the number of the count that I had was inconsistent with the site plan. So Derek basically had said this, there's a note to future antennas and equipment of other aspect or others on sheet three, which relates to all future antennas and microwave dishes. Other than that, what has already been solved by Verizon is as shown below. And then I don't anticipate a need for any newer updated plan, but this should be corrected for the record. I think I said four, maybe where there was three, and we'll let Derek speak in a moment here if you'd like. But staff is recommending approval, at this time I can take any questions.
Is this the five G tower?
I don't know, I can't speak to that, those particularities. My assumption would be no, based on its height alone.
How close are the nearest neighbors?
Back here. So there, there are a number of neighbors in the surrounding vicinity, although much of the property from my recollection was undeveloped. And it appeared to be vacant from what I recall, I guess I'm working off the memory here, but yeah. Is that your question? Okay.
Any other questions? Hey Derek, let's bring the Verizon representative up, please.
That's Derek, right?
Yes.
All right, Derek, I'm unmuted, if you want to unmute on your end, you can do a call.
Okay, how about, can you hear me?
Speak up, please, a little bit.
Okay, how's that?
Okay. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, just kind of going through things, essentially.
Okay, we're gonna have to fix, we're gonna have to fix this for the record. Hang on, sir. All right, let's try it now, sir. You're muted again, Derek, is there a master wire? Derek, go ahead, sir, unmute yourself.
Okay, how's that?
That's a little better, thank you.
All right.
Okay, go ahead with your presentation.
Okay, how about now?
That's good, go ahead, sir.
Okay, yeah, I just want to quickly go over things, kind of what happened here. Essentially, this was unaccessible land in a remote area. So when we submitted our application, we had not gone in and done any geotechnical work or any, any site work. Once we received approval from the county for the CUP that was submitted in two thousand and twenty. We built the road in, we did our drilling and it was determined that we were basically on a solid slab of, of basalt, which we actually ended up having to blast in order to get a level foundation on. But as a consequence, we needed a larger footprint for our foundation, we also needed to tweak our design. So a monopole wasn't really a good fit for that type of an application. So we went to a spread foundation and went with a lattice tower. Initially, we were proposing to build a hundred and seventy-five foot stealth monopole, essentially painted green. And then it turned out that a better application with this type of terrain, going to a hundred and seventy foot lattice tower, which is also stealth. So our application all along has been for a stealth tower, we just had, did have to make a design change to accommodate the terrain and the soil composition. Other than that, and then, you know, along the way during construction, some things, you know, there were some changes. Like the, the footprint for our lease area did go from a forty, from a thirty by thirty to a forty by forty-three because we needed a larger, larger spread foundation. The and the other thing, the other changes are pretty minor, I mean, the generator size changed a little bit. We had to make a slight curve to our access road just for bet, for, for a better approach that wasn't going to be as steep. Because again, there was no road initially and we kind of learned things as we, things as we went during the phase of construction. We also put in a security gate up closer to the tower, just to keep people from coming onsite and getting near the tower. And the only other thing I want to mention is our, our fence is a six foot chain link fence with, with a barbed wire on top. I know that one of the conditions is to raise the grade, so it does not exceed eight feet. But our preference, we'd like to actually make that condition where it's either raise the grade or lower the height of the fence because we can actually remove some of that barbed wire, some of those rungs, get the fence down to eight feet and less. That might be more practical. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions you guys might have and, sorry, I couldn't make the meeting, I had a conflict with my schedule. You know, just, that's, I'll kind of leave it at that. For now.
Any questions in the applicant? I'm assuming this, this is a key part of the communications, does it microwave up to the top of Switzer?
This receives microwave from Kavanaugh Bay, which I believe receives a microwave shot backhaul from Priest River.
Okay, I got you. And as it sits now, is the tower painted green?
Oh yeah, the tower and all ancillary equipment, microwave dishes, antennas, et cetera. The tower is operational, it's up and running. And it's helping to serve the community at the north end of the lake and offload some of the capacity issues that they've had.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, so we'll go to public comment, one person has to hand up. So we have a phone number of six two oh two. Looks like it's muted on the area, and if you want to unmute, it's kind of folks with their hand up, if you'd like to speak, speak now, please, mute your microphone. Okay, well, their hands down, man. Okay, hearing them, we'll close public comment. And we'll open it up for commissioners, deliberations, and questions. So, I don't know, being that that fence work is up in the middle of nowhere, whether it's a
Yeah. This, this is very interesting.
And this has been such a needed thing at the lake.
Yeah, first is cleaning it up and new drawings.
Yeah, so it's, it's very interesting, I find it interesting. This case and the last case are not, and the last couple of cases are not connected. But they are in a sense, because what we're dealing with here is going to a, a project, anybody's project, with a plan. Here's what we intend to do, that's a plan. What we're seeing is a site map of what was built. In the civil engineering world, you have a plan, a design plan, approved plan. And then you provide as-built drawings of what was actually built. And sometimes they're not the same. Because you find soil conditions change, you find material. Whoops, they didn't have X Y Z girder, they had to do A B C girder. It still meets the intent of the plan. So that other discussion, and I, I've had this discussion with Mr. Provol two or three times. Unfortunately, we throw these words around and they just become morphed into all kinds of meanings. A plan is what you intend to do. And as-built is what you've done. So we have a site plan, that's what it is, but in a zone change, and we're not on a zone change here, but we'll talk about that later, maybe after this hearing. So I, I, I'm not at all concerned about the changes. The things that the code requires about, it's going to be FCC, it's going to be this, that and the other, it still does. And they've shown that. I'm, I'm more, personally, I'm more of a fan of a lattice structure tower, just because of its overall stability than a monopole, especially a hundred and seventy-five foot monopole. It could be, it could be stable and all that, the monopole, but I like you said, they couldn't put one in this application, here. You just, you'd have to drill a hole through that basalt to make a case on it and then put it on that. So I, I'm not, I'm not finding any of this, it's just it's too bad the code doesn't have the provision to review an as-built drawing for something that was done and see that it meets the intent of the approval. And maybe that's something we can work on.
And the modification really to, in the overall picture. And you never know what you're going to get when you start building and what you're going to get.
Well, true. Again, so it's, even though this was a conditional use permit, which Again, so even though this was a conditional use permit which requires a plan of what you're going to do, making the comparison against the zone change which doesn't have a plan. It doesn't, even this shows, well, okay, you could plan what to do. But reality steps in and you may have to change your plan, put something else on the ground.
But you can demonstrate your plan.
Yeah, it's a good idea going in. So you have some idea of what you're going to do. Therefore, you can, you can talk about it fact and so forth. So I think the intent of what was approved in 2020 is still met. It hasn't deviated from that. The code requirements are still met, so.
However, the applicant came back to the county and said, hey.
That would have been a nice thing for them to do.
Well, they should just turn on.
If you recall, so if you recall, the condition on the conditional use permit, the number one, first condition, is that this has to be built in accord.
With the site.
Yeah, in compliance with the site line. And so when they deviate from that, then it needs to be amended. And that's the challenge with that requirement is it requires that exactness.
Yep. And again, you know, having dealt with dozens of engineering contracts for construction, every one of those says this or equivalent, this or equivalent, specification or equivalent. Then it's up to the contractor to say, we're presenting this as an equivalent, something or other. And here's the verification, here's manufacturer's specification, blah, blah, blah. And the agency says yes or no. So again, it's too bad we don't have that kind of language, that kind of progressive language in our code that recognizes that gives the, so you can skip this step. It wasn't, I don't know that it really did anything to go through this exercise tonight other than the approval of what was actually built.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Another thing to work on.
So getting down to, I guess something we need to decide, what do we want to do about the fence? Because there is a condition that they have to do some grading to make the effective height of the fence less than eight feet. The applicant suggested it might be easier to just make the fence shorter. I think Brian makes an interesting point. I'm not sure I really care if it's. Frankly, given the location.
So what in the code, why? Why can't we be at eight foot?
So the code requires.
Right, and actually, eight feet or greater is considered a structure, which necessitates a building location permit. Or, that's why I had the or clause for bringing, raising the grade so that it covers the fence side. So we're trying to work solutions, but I'm open to entertaining glory of the fence. It solves the problem, certainly.
Once it becomes a structure, then you have to.
I do. I know I understand the story. I mean, most commercial fences are eight foot.
But this happened across the street for me at a residence due to the neighbors that went across the street. And then enough said, and then they found out, oh, it was taller than eight feet. And so they just changed the grade and that fixed it.
So compliance will go out and look at that when they're all done.
Yep, okay.
How was this brought to you? Did you guys go and take a look?
Compliance, yeah. Yeah, compliance amount.
I wondered if it was voluntary or.
Right, it was. It was voluntary.
Okay, this is Commissioner Frankenbach. I move to approve this project file MOD 0007-21, requesting to modify the site plan, set facts, tower design, and all changes submitted in Exhibit A and site plan for conditional use permit file CUP 0001-20, finding that it is in accord with the general and specific objectives of the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan and Bonner County Revise Code as enumerated in the following conclusions of law and based upon the evidence submitted at the time the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. I further move to adopt the findings of fact, the conclusions of law as set forth in the staff report and direct planning staff to draft written findings and conclusions to reflect this motion and transmit to all interested parties. The action that could be taken to obtain the conditional use permit modification is to complete the conditions of approval with one change to those identified in the staff report. And that is that for Condition A5, the applicant may either raise the grade or lower the fence to meet the less than eight-foot requirement. There are more votes, I guess. Section, not involved in taking a private property.
Commissioner Frankenbach has made a motion to approve MOD 0007-21, conditional use permit modification, Verizon Wireless. Is there a second?
Commissioner Reeve, I second that.
Commissioner Reeve with a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Okay. So, yeah, we'll stay on cell towers and let's talk about what happened a week or so ago.
What happened a week or so ago? Two towers in Priest River.
Oh, the two towers, oh, for sure.
With the county commissioners.
Yeah, up by the lake.
So, yeah, the applicant appealed. They got their attorney to write up the appeals and they appealed those two denials and asked the board to overturn or change their decision on those. And the board did approve those. We did get a reconsideration on one of the files, the Wood Golds one. So we'll see where that goes.
So the thing that's curious to me is we impose this requirement that towers have to be built to accommodate other shared users, whatever the.
Yeah.
Why don't we tell them that's what they should do? We do it for a reason, to minimize the number of towers and theoretically provide the equivalent service with fewer towers.
Yeah, this language, this stuff all needs to be strengthened. All of the subareas brought this up. They were all concerned about this topic. And so it needs to.
Because I injected some reason. Not to say we're okay with them, but I think when you have a 170-foot tower that's there.
Right.
Right, you have a 170-foot tower that's there and it's designed to have co-location. That was my big issue is from their testimony, the reason they didn't want to go on another tower was a business policy of, I believe it was T-Mobile. T-Mobile says, we won't put our gear on another tower, not because there's a technical issue, but because if they have a business policy. And I think we should tell them, tough. We don't want towers all over.
And that's why.
You want to be an expert, go do a deal with Verizon or go on the Verizon towers, 170 feet tall.
It is a tough issue. And I can't go into all of it because the legality is surrounding that. It was basically a conversation of attorneys talking to the board. Yeah, I figured. That whole situation is closely resolved with everything that's happening. It's all proprietary, blah, blah, blah. Right.
Yeah, I guess I could understand if they made the case that there was a technical issue, why they couldn't be co-located. I don't think there's any situations where that would. It's topic I know something about. I don't think there's any situations where that would really hold.
Well, and the Verizon folks have said that over and over again. Yes.
Sure.
Sure, sure. We will.
We make them build it that way for a reason.
And physically, they can handle.
Yeah.
And that's what.
Do you want me to send you the appeal? Let you read through it?
It'd be interesting. Yeah, yeah, and I'm not sure. But all, yeah, it'd be interesting.
It's ten pages, single spaced. Single spaced.
So there's still lots going on. We, I kept promising these guys that we'd slow down. We actually have. We're not taking in 60 BLPs a week. We're taking in about 20, right? Roughly. So we did finally hit 1700. So I suspected that we were going to hit 1700 by the end of the year. We're a month ahead of that. So we'll probably end up with 17, 400 or 500. The. What else? So we had, you know, I meet with the board once a month. Me, the staff, the planning management team. We meet with the board and we talk about, you know, what's going on in the department. And they continually ask us about the comp plan, what's happening with the comp plan. So I started looking around this day a little bit. And I also started looking, you know, rereading the statutes. The statute says that the board can create a planning commission and a zoning commission or a planning and zoning commission. And so we talked about that at the meeting in November, about that idea. There's one other county, Leighton County, has a planning and a zoning commission. The planning commission is focused on the comprehensive plan, updating, writing the comprehensive plan, and then also writing and updating the zoning code. And then they also hear changes to the comp plan. And that's what the planning commission does, is those things. They have meetings twice a month. They don't always have a meeting twice a month because maybe there's nothing to be worked on. The zoning commission is basically a quasi-judicial board. They hear quasi-judicial zone changes, which would be a zone change applied by somebody else. Okay, somebody, a member of the public, right? So they would hear those types of zone changes. They would hear all the subdivisions, conditionally use permits and variances. We have advertised three times in the last five years to hire a hearing examiner. We have begged and pleaded and offered things we don't have. And folks have never taken us upon the deal. And I don't blame them. You know, the one thing that we've heard continually as we go out is the concern with, you know, one person making these decisions. And so it really does make sense to create a planning and a zoning commission. It would be a seven-member planning commission and a five-member zoning commission. So I'm going to present that to the board on January 12th as an ordinance change in the code. It is published. It's on the website under Corn Project since AM 22. The plan in there is to ask the board to put that, to advertise those positions. Everybody will have a chance to say, which one do I want to be on? Okay? And then we'll advertise to fill those other spots. And then probably by the end of March, we will, March 20th is what I put in my staff report, is that we'll hire in the application, is that we'll have those two committees formed by then. What's going to require is it's going to require a rewrite of some of the zoning code. Not all of it, just mostly Chapter 2 that talks about the changes to, you know, when the comp plan, when the files go to the planning commission and when the files go to the zoning commission. So it's just one, basically, one section is going to be, need to be recreated. And so that should be an easy do. We should be able to get that done by the end of March, by the time the board puts these two committees in place.
So for like ones we hear typically where there's both amendments to the comp plan and a zoning change, those are now heard, which have been heard by two, in two separate hearings by the different committees.
Which is a good thing, I think.
We've thought about that time and time again. We, in the staff report, it says this amendment is consistent with the comp plan. We're changing the comp plan, so we have to change it. And then the zone can become this. Yeah, it just seems like it's, wait a minute. Two seconds ago, we approved the comp plan and now we're saying it's consistent. But the staff report was done two weeks ago.
Right.
So it is, yeah, it's all kind of built in, seen in conflict. Quasi-judicial. I kind of look up the definition. That's what struck me when it said in the change that this is, the zoning commission is a quasi-judicial hearing and planning commission would not be. So I got to look that up and get that clear. I truly thought that it was, if you took a subsequent action of an ordinance, that makes a quasi-judicial. Because.
As far as if the appealable nature taken.
Yeah, it's complex. I mean, it's a legal definition. So I just want to get that clear minded. Because it's still, I just wanted to be, I don't think there's anything wrong by saying both commissions would have quasi-judicial hearings.
Well, the comp plan would be more legislative, wouldn't it?
And same with creating new ordinances or modifying ordinances.
Right, more legislative.
Yeah, legislative. So judicial. I know.
Yeah, no, I'm just kidding.
Based on your experience, what kind of challenges do you think you have with finding five more home here?
So. You know, that's interesting. I thought a lot about that. But we seeded five subarea committees with seven people.
Twelve originally.
Yeah, and so, yeah.
Twelve was the goal.
Yeah.
Had a twelve and a couple.
Well, yeah, it was nine and then three.
Yeah, nine and three and then sometimes 12 and three.
So I didn't give it possible. I didn't, well, I didn't really see it. Try. I mean, we've, we had, I don't know, for these things, we probably had four or five applications. Two cents, three cents, five cents.
I guess the other question I had in reading it was, it talks about, and I didn't memorize it, but the positions like A, B and.
Yeah.
Are we going to go away from the geographic distribution of this group?
No, no, that has only to do with the time. So we don't.
So how come we're all a district and we were at large?
Well.
Because that's the way the committees set up. I think two from each district, they're all at large.
Oh, is that correct?
And when one came available, it was the at-large.
Hair comb. Because I really think we'd be able to get a lot of work done. I mean, it really concerns me that, you know, any of these elements are 2002.
Yeah.
You know, we haven't looked at them in 20 years. And when you talk about analysis, right?
Yeah, so we're, that's what we're going to talk about, you know, is making sure that the background analysis is standing ready. So when the crew gets on it, we'll have it.
Yep.
It has to be. And we, that's, we're going to discuss that just, we may bring some of those things in the interim to the commission just to say, you know, we look at this component of the plan. How do we, let's give it a best shot, how do we think that it's going to work out into a land use regulation? And therefore, what do we need to analyze with a tight list of stuff to analyze? Otherwise, you can do exactly what JV did back in 2004, the world. Right, here it is. Everything about the world in Bonner County, written down on paper, they got paid for it.
I think that's, that's it. We got, we got a meeting in two weeks, just one file, so. And there's another file to study on. Gary, forget everything that we did before and start fresh. Oh, so we're going to, yeah, we're going to, we are bringing the record forward. We're bringing all the, we're bringing all the public comments that we received before so folks don't have to resubmit all those comments. So we are bringing all the public comments and all that filed forward. The main reason for the de novo was to allow for new information. And so, because they wanted the comments from Fish and Game, which we're still waiting for the comments from Fish and Game. I emailed them and heard from them this morning that they're still working on their report, so. Which triggers, yeah, which triggers this whole thing, right? So it's still coming.
Can I remember, you said, did it change? Does the application change? Do I remember enough that it, it had changed, does the application change?
I don't know that the application won't change, no, it's, no, he's definitely confirmed all the stuff he's wanted to do. He's, he has, uh, county commissioners kinda wanted to change, but.
Yeah, I thought there was some negotiation if I remember correctly.
So this was similar to earlier tonight, so he was approved for the zone change. Uh, that was recorded, and so then he turned in, uh, eight MLDs, split the property in twentys. Turned in eight MLDs back in the summertime, and that was all approved. That's all been put on hold, just like the one earlier tonight, because the zone change is still up in the air. So once we received the reconsideration, all that stopped and, and it'll proceed once, it'll proceed once this decision is filed. So. Yeah, if we, if, yeah. Yeah, it is what it is, so we brush up on it, so we, there's ways out to speed.
How simple we have it up there.
Right?
Oh, soon we'll be out there.
It's on the website.
It's not the staff reports, not there.
The staff reports are there, we're waiting on that last comment, it hasn't come in yet, so we have a staff report.
Hopefully it's towards the end of the week.
Are you getting public comments?
We received some, but we have told them that we're gonna move those previous public, yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna keep all that, we'll keep the whole file together, it's just this other fishing game with critical having to go out.
Mr. Lynn Scott has a question.
Why you said a question, not necessarily about that file, but when you, when you, when you send something out for agency review. And, and you give them the thirty days in order, and you have their coordination as, as a state agencies, the one with Lupa, it's in there. And they don't respond. Two days before the files are, and all of a sudden they send this response in. Wh-what happens with those, is there, or, or where she has the, the comments come in a week too late after the files are already been heard, what?
We, we still have to the record, an agency's comment will always add to the record, but it's the, will it get considered, right?
So the, I think our procedure sends up to the chair to determine whether to take in late comments that weren't considered in the effort.
But is his, being as a public agency.
Yeah, it's different.
Is there, is there a different question?
In the seven days.
Comments, right.
We would, we would take in the agency comment, yeah. Yeah. And so the, yeah, and then if, again, if there's a specific interest course, the members of, the members of the public have been contacting some of these agencies. And asking them to comment, but, but I, you know, like I did with the school district on the last file, you know, I went and spent that time with the school district. Trying to get a comment out of them, which they did not respond, so. Um, that's, you know, I did that with this one, so hopefully, but they responded saying they weren't working on it. We should have something to. Well, hopefully, yeah. So.
Discuss it now, but anyway.
Okay. What else, um? Oh, ju- again, I just need to, I'm really concerned a little bit about the open meeting law stuff. And, and just make sure that you're aware. If, if you're getting emails from the public on files, those need to be coming to us, A, and B, you really need to be disclosing that. Those emails are all, you, you know, they're all able to be, have public information requests on them. And so if you're getting emails from the public that have to do with these files, um, it, it really needs to be disclosed at the meeting. So when we ask for a conflict of interest, or when the chair asks, is there a conflict of interest, that's when you disclose. Hey, yeah, I've gotten a couple of emails on this file, or I've talked to somebody, or I've gone to the property and looked at the site. All of those things are considered exportate communication. And, and that can tank a file unless you disclose it, and that can also, there's liability for it, right? Open meeting law stuff.
So what if you don't look at that email, county email website? Like me. It hasn't been opened.
Yep.
Right?
That's a, that's an interesting.
If you haven't read it. Then how can you be in conflict?
That's what I first asked you when they were coming down the pike, and I guess there's some expectation to open it and forward it or something, I.
Oh, yes, yeah, absolutely, open it just for the, the planning department, yeah.
Has anybody gotten emails from the public?
I haven't.
Yeah.
Well, I've had some. Let's see, but they haven't been. Emails that I've had from like seven B or the keep Idaho, whatever that thing is.
Right, keep, K B C R.
They haven't been aimed at a file. They're generic, you know, background, well, we need to look at this, they talk about code change, they talk about this kind of stuff, like the one that came in about the code change. You know, they, that's now an A file, so that's an interesting one, because that is now a file.
Yeah, it is now a file.
And yet, I don't know, we all got that email.
Is that application signed? Yeah.
Okay. So I'll, so I'll have to divulge that, because I did get an email about that. And I've looked on there, well, I, no, I've reviewed the file.
Sure.
On the county, so.
Sure, the files are on the county, so.
Yes, so what, rural Idaho started a file or something?
Keep, yeah, yeah, they're amending.
Rural, keep, or keep. Bonner County rural.
Yeah, they're amending the, the chapter two where it talks about necessity, defining the word necessary, they're, they're elaborating on that section.
Yeah, so, and it, it's on, it's on the website, read it, it's good, you know, it's, it's a good start anyway. But we can't say anymore about it tonight.
So we have, uh, we have January and February, that's like six files on that. So, lots of variances, lots of, or several conditional use permits, maybe one or two or three. Mostly, mostly variances, it just, it's just the way the things flow, as we get towards the end of the building season, we tend to get a lot more variances. And, and so.
I know, there, there's.
Then we scheduled two nights with only one hearing, right?
Right.
So we had, we had a one, two weeks deal, we have one in two weeks, so that, that necessitated like a backlog, so we had six files for three months.
So I'm just, just perusing the planning website today, going all the way down the list of all the applications and the active files. Um, for some reason, I'm struck with the number of, of administrative variances.
Yeah, that, that just needs, they've been approved and moved on, they just need to.
Right, they're not underlying, they're, they've been gone, but it's just, I can get now, how, how far are they?
Probably forty, but a few, but probably also forty variant, regular variances.
Yeah. Closer, so we're getting a lot more either administrative or straight across the board variance.
We'll probably do close to a hundred in this year, but again, seventeen hundred, well, and when I say a hundred, that also includes administrative exceptions, less than five percent.
Right.
But a lot of that has to do with, again, the seventeen hundred permits. I mean, when you look at seventeen hundred permits and a hundred variances, it's, it's a big number, but it's still not still asked proportionally. What would be interesting is to break those down and see what they're for.
Well, that, that would be a good exercise, I think, I think that should happen, as kind of the end of year report, what happened in two thousand four.
Yeah.
Where are we going? That, that should reveal, where's it going and is there any mid-course adjustment that's necessary?
Yep.
All right.
Okay, this meeting is guiding you to the discussion tonight, December sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one, it's eight twenty-six. We're adjourned.